Good morning. Welcome to the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting of April 14, 2021. This meeting will now come to order. We will rise for the pledge of allegiance and the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
We have our inspirational word for the day. Do everything possible on your part to live in peace with everybody.
Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hung.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Commissioner Lundey.
I am here.
Okay. A. Presentation.
Tim Kurian, Director, Lorraine County Job and Family Services, regards to the Rental Emergency Assistance Program.
Welcome, Mr. Kurian, Director Kurian. So you are here today to give us an update on the Rental Emergency Assistance Program. Director Kurian, before you start in the presentation, can you share with us a little bit about yourself and your background?
Oh, sure. Good morning. Yes, my wife and I have three children who are probably at home watching right now. No, they're all, they're all grown up and doing their own thing. But I grew up here in Lorraine County, proud graduate of Admiral King High School, went on to the military after high school and was a specialist tank driver. Drove M1 Abram tanks, came back to the community, started a small business. But my commitment to the community and to the veteran community has continued. As a matter of fact, on Thursday, a small plug for the organization, on Thursday I will be handing the gavel, passing the gavel after three years of president of the Lorraine Veterans Council. I'll be passing the gavel to our new president, which is Mike Katcher. So in that council, I was focused on the needs of veterans in, in Lorraine and in the county at large, and making sure that we continue with our traditions and educating the community of the rich history of our veteran community here in, in Lorraine. After running the business for many years and continuing on as volunteer in the community with various organizations, I've now have the opportunity to lead one of our largest and most important organizations, I think, in job and family services, in doing our best. We have a team of upwards of 230 people now. They're doing our best to meet the needs of families in, in Lorraine County.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Of course.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you very much. And thank you for having me here today and inviting me to present an update of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program. Job and Family Services is excited to partner with the Board of Commissioners to provide families in need in Lorraine County with funds to help with rent and utility expenses. The program is unique for three reasons. The ERA program is unique for three reasons. First, its liberal eligibility guidelines, the amount of assistance available, and the fact that landlords can actually initiate the process of the application. In terms of eligibility, a family must only meet three guidelines. First, be eligible for unemployment or have been impacted adversely by the COVID pandemic, which in all honesty is, honesty is most families in Lorraine County and most families around the globe. The second guideline, eligibility guideline that a family must meet is they must be suffering through some sort of residential instability, which sounds extreme, but in all actuality, if someone is behind, if a family is behind on their rent, that's residential instability. If a household is having challenges paying their electric or gas or any other utility, that's housing instability. And if a family would have difficulty paying for the basic needs of their household because of rental expenses or any other expenses, that's instability. So as you can see, most families in Lorraine County, many families in Lorraine County will also meet that guideline. And then the third guideline is an income guideline, which again is very liberal. Let me grab my flyer here. So a household of one can make up to $42,600 and qualify for these funds. A household of four can make $60,800 and qualify for these funds. A household of eight can make $80,300 and qualify for these funds. So as you can see, the, the guidelines for income are, are very liberal also. So I want to make it clear that families that generally would not qualify for help will qualify for these funds. When a household does qualify, we have an opportunity to pay their current month's rent and the utility, and their utilities due, which is generally where the help like this ends. But with this special program, we'll also be able to pay up to 12 months in arrears, which means we can go as far back as April of 2020 and assist these families in stabilizing and catching up financially. Also, we have the opportunity to pay three prospective months of rent. So we can pay three months into the future. So in totality, we were able to pay up to 15 months of rent and utilities and, and assist these families in catching up with their utilities. The third unique thing about the program is it actually allows landlords to initiate the application process. So they can actually go online, the, and actually go onto the portal, or portal, it's at lcdjfs.com. So for, it's the acronym for Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services, lcdjfs.com, and they can initiate the application. This has worked extremely well with those that have multiple properties because they can input all the addresses of their, and their tenants' email addresses, and the tenant will receive an invitation to apply for the program. So they input brief information that includes the email address of their tenants, and their tenant will actually receive an email saying, this is the application process, please, please apply. We have had a few challenges along the way with the ERA program. The first, we unknowingly created ourselves because we began to market the program without a mechanism to process applications. So there was a huge amount of interest because there was a huge amount of need, but we couldn't quickly roll out the infrastructure to begin to process these applications. Then we did have many challenges rolling out the software that we, that we purchased to process the applications. So we, and we had so many challenges that we actually began processing apps on, on paper, which we had hoped not to do, but the need was there. So our team got together, put together a process and began to attempt to meet the need in a old school way. So despite the lingering software challenges, the program is now gaining traction and checks are being delivered. I'm excited to say that almost $200,000 has been dispersed to families in need, and our JFS team is currently processing almost a million dollars in pending applications. We're currently working with over 300 families and expect to receive 20 to 30 new applications from families in need daily. Now that we're, now that our, our processing infrastructure is in place and we can increase capacity, we're in the marketing and partnership phase of the project. So now the process, the application process is running much more smoothly than before, and we're able to ramp things up. So now we've begun identifying partners in the community that we can work with to continue to meet the need because our footprint is only so big in the county. Even though we meet the needs of families all across the county, we realize that there are segments of, of the community that we don't readily have access to. So we've reached out to several organizations. We're working very closely with the Office on Aging to assist them in meeting the needs of, of their constituents, of the aging population. And that partnership also prompted a conversation with the United Way, which we're excited about because the United Way has a program called You Can Program, which is a collaboration of agencies all across the county into the southern part of county and areas where sometimes resources don't reach. And we are actually accessing their infrastructure and allowing agencies or partnering with agencies to help their constituents apply online for our, for these resources and also really, again, access parts of the community that generally wouldn't access resources from JFS. So we're excited about those partnerships, and we're continuing to reach out to organizations and, and leaders in the community to see how we can tap into their infrastructure and really try to meet the needs of all families in Lorraine County with these funds. So again, I want to reiterate that many families that wouldn't normally qualify or be eligible for resources that are, are out there will with this program. I also would like to close by applauding the team, our team over at JFS because they've done extremely well at dealing with these challenges and really putting forth a product that is going to be, be hugely successful in terms of meeting needs of families in Lorraine County. And I will mention that when we received, or when we received a call about the $9 million that were available, I think I was in week two or three of my tenure as the director. So my thought right away was, we help families in need, that's what this project does, let's go, let's, let's do this. I didn't realize that we really didn't have the infrastructure in place to make this happen quickly. I mean, I think we're more prepared and have an infrastructure in place there than any other organization to do something like this. But I really put our team in a challenging position because we had to really pivot very quickly. But I've been impressed by really how they've been able to assist me in putting things together. And now we have a project that I think is going to be hugely successful.
Thank you, Director Kurian.
Thank you. Any questions?
Director, welcome this morning and.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Former tank driver. Wow. I don't think I want to be in front of you driving down the road, but, okay. Anyhow, yeah, thank you to you and your staff for all that you're doing. You know, government and just, just our whole way of life, everybody's experiencing so many new things.
Yes, sir.
And so many initiatives have, have been launched, you know, being a member of the board last year when a lot of the CARES dollars came through, you know, you had to look at all the guidelines and, you know, some were more black and white, others were gray. And it's always the guidelines that really hold things up. And in all fairness to your department, you were waiting on guidelines before you could really go forward with a lot of things. You know, then of course, we wanted to make sure we had the right software in place so we could properly track and report everything. And, you know, I realize those are things beyond your control. So please make sure that gets back to your team, that that's just some of the realities of life. You know, you gotta crawl before you walk and walk before you run. But now we're up and running. I guess if, if you would just stress the importance of getting the right supporting documents to you when these things take place because I, I think anytime that we have people call the Commissioner's office and say, well, this isn't being processed through JFS, and then they want us to intervene and try to see if we can help problem shoot it, I think I will tell you that almost all the time it comes back to the individuals not having provided the proper documents that are needed to actually process something. So if you could just walk us through the importance of the supporting documents.
Yes, sir. And I appreciate you mentioning that because you're absolutely right. That's really where, I mean, from beginning to end, if all the documents are available and the application can get processed readily, the processes can be very quick in terms of application to check. But the hiccups do come where someone doesn't either provide it or doesn't have the documentation readily available. So the documents that are required are a statement of hardship, so basically saying, this is how we've been adversely impacted, photo ID, social security cards, 90, the last 90 days of income, landlord information, the landlord's information, signed lease, and if there's any type of eviction notice, the eviction notice. And then for the landlord, we would need the W-9. So it's only a handful of documents, but you're absolutely right. If one is missing or if one is, you know, is not readily available, then that can hold up the whole process. The other thing that we've done is generally the quickest way for this to be processed is for a family to upload all the documents online. But for those individuals that either don't have the capability to do that or just don't have the, the knowledge to do that, we do have drop boxes in front of our building where we, I mean, people can drop the information off to us. Myself and my staff have walked out to the parking lot and grabbed documents from individuals. We also have a, a line that people can call so that they can apply over the phone. We realize that not everyone is comfortable providing their information online or, or even completing the application. So this is the, a number that they would call and leave a message, and then our staff would call them back. The number is 440-284-4423. So they won't receive an actual person on the other, on the other side, but they'll leave us a message and we will reach back out to them and complete the application with them online. Also, there were some people that have had challenges with the online software. If that persists, they can call this number and we'll reach back out to them and, and assist them in processing the application.
And if I could, as a, as a follow-up, you know, I, I know when I've had conversations with local governments, you know, they talk about many households where they're way behind on water bills, sewer, those types of things. So I guess it's important for people to know that they can also come in and utilize the program in that way.
Absolutely. And I appreciate you mentioning that. The, when, a lot of times when people hear utilities, they, they automatically think electric and gas, and water in many cases is excluded. But with this particular program, we can cover electric, gas, water, bulk resources like propane, oil in some cases. We can cover garbage and sewer, which in some municipalities is combined, in others it's not. So you're absolutely right. We can cover resources, utilities expenses with this, with these funds that other funds haven't been able to in the past.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and if I can take 10 more seconds and just say, another program, and I mentioned it last time I was here, but another program that we have in place is our PRC program. And that program, the, the income guidelines are a little more limited, but we've just expanded that program to include home repair, vehicle repair and insurance, and vehicle repair and insurance. There's one other thing that's not coming to mind, but this is a program that we are very excited. We just hired two new people because we can see the need for these resources. And we're going to be ramping up the marketing and the information going out about these resources so that, again, we could continue to meet the needs of, of families here in Lorraine County.
Okay. Well, I just want to say thank you to your team. You know, it's, it's been a pleasure meeting them, and I know you're putting them through a lot, but they're doing a great job. And like I said last week, the city of New York has 1.3 billion. They have even gotten dollar one out to anybody. So the fact that your team has taken a lot of initiatives on their own, and, you know, like you said, the infrastructure really wasn't there to support it, and they did it, did it anyway and got it done. So are they downloading the rest of the stuff that they had to do by hand? Has that all been downloaded?
That's what we're, we're in the process of doing that now, yes.
You know, I hate to throw you on the spot like this. Do you know how much money's been back out in the community yet? Do you?
Yeah, $200,000 in checks have been cut and were, and 1 million is pending.
Oh, 1 million pending. Okay. Very good.
Very good.
So we, and we, another little tidbit that I'll share, but we're hoping we don't have to rely on it. We were informed that the Treasury has extended the deadline to utilize these funds.
Oh, really? Okay.
But our goal is to stick to the plan and have all the funds out and meet the needs of families as quickly as possible.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Kurian.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Enjoy the day.
Okay. Madam Clerk, we are moving on to investments.
Number one, investments.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yep.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Number two, appropriations.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yep.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Number three, transfers.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Number four, advances or repayments. There were none. Number five, requisitions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Number six, travel. There were none. Number seven, bills.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Next item of business is number eight. Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within the jurisdiction of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. At the conclusion of today's board meeting, the Commissioners may recess into an executive session to discuss personnel and new hires and various board appointments. The next item of business is number nine. I move to approve the meeting minutes and waive the reading of the minutes of April 7, 2021.
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yep.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Next item of business is number 10.
Request the auditor for evaluation of the renewal of a 0.065 mils levy for TB, a renewal of 0.065 mils with a decrease of 0.005 mils, and a renewal of 0.065 mils with a decrease of 0.01 mils for the TB levy to be placed on November 3, 2021 ballot.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board?
Yes. Would you, would the board like to, should we have the county administrator explain this? Because we have three of these we're about to vote on.
Hey, Mr. Administrator?
I was just asking if you guys wanted him to or not, so.
I guess we do.
Absolutely, the more information, the better.
Yes. He got here just in time.
Got a haircut, we should let him speak, you know?
Yes, he did.
Well, I'm sorry, I walked in a little late, so I didn't hear what the question was when you called me up.
We are looking for discussion from you and more information on the, the TB, the TB levy.
We're looking at the next three.
Yeah, right now we actually have just over 1 point, if you don't mind, I'm gonna take this off since we're social distancing, 1.4 million dollars in our account. We can actually go through, and I believe, give a reduction on this levy. Right now, we're bringing in roughly, we pay out about $370,000, and we're bringing in around $500,000, and then we have 1.4 million in here. So just giving you some different options in order to go through and do a reduction of the levy, bringing it down to, you know, 465, 420,000, rough numbers here. Again, we have the funds in there, and with the housing values going up and everything, it's helping us out. So my recommendation to the board is to do a reduction of the levy and not actually do a renewal because we're covered.
Okay, so what you're doing, what we're voting on today, though, we're not voting to support it.
Today is just to get the numbers.
Okay.
Yeah, but it would just kind of let you know, going forward, my thoughts would be we should do a reduction, not a renewal.
Okay.
With the renewal with the decrease, you mean?
Correct.
It would be a decrease, yeah, for the home, the property owners.
Okay.
Okay.
I believe we'd been working with Mercy Hospital in the past and
Correct.
Done some work with them, and generally the programming costs for this area, which is a requirement, by the way, of having to address TB, was somewhere in the neighborhood of, I think you cited, 376,000, maybe is what the costs were ending up being a year, somewhere around 400,000, I thought, if I remember correctly.
Correct.
The cost for orchestrating the programming. So as a result of this reduction, we're pretty much borderline, I guess you could say, on that, from what it'll probably end up bringing in, so. And as you did say, there is a, you know, there is a balance in place, but this is part of, you know, an ongoing need and a requirement as well to address TB.
Right. Well, right now, things are good. We have a good amount in reserves, and things aren't, not having a rash, a TB outbreak, so, yeah, there's things that we want to do. We want to go through, and we actually want to lower taxes for our residents when we can do it, and this is an opportunity to do that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Are you going to need me for the next one as well?
Yes.
Okay. So now with that, we giveth in one hand and we taketh with the other.
Grab a seat. I'll be right with you.
No more discussion.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hung?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Okay, next item of business is number 11. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
Request the auditor for evaluation of an additional levy for 0.26 mils, 0.28 mils, and 0.3 mils for the crime lab coroner levy to place on November 3rd, 2021 ballot.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Mr. Administrator, still standing.
Like I said, recommending a tax reduction on one levy, but asking for another. And this is actually really good, in my opinion, because with the tax levies, you know where the money is going. So with the TB, you know it's going there, it's for that cause. With this here, we have our coroner, there's roughly around $900,000 in his budget. Our crime lab does get some funding, but it's underfunded and comes from, gets made up from the general fund, which is roughly around $400,000, and they're going to be short this year, and we're going to probably need to put in another $75,000 on this. So by going through and doing a levy for these two, we can make sure that we, one, get the coroner where he has the tools that's needed for someone, a county of our size, and then also getting our crime lab out of the old cafeteria and moving them into a facility that's going to have better security, it's going to have the equipment that's needed in order to become a certified lab. Currently, our crime lab is not certified, there's only a few in the state. However, this crime lab does a lot of important work for Lorain County. Sheriff's use it, the police officers use it, even the local FBI uses our crime lab, and they're willing to give written statements, from what I understand, talking about the importance of the crime lab. So by going through and putting a levy on here, we can certify the lab, we can improve the equipment that we have, we can get them a permanent location, which is one of the requirements in order to have a certified lab, and we can do a lot of good. A few years ago, we had a drug issue, some of the street drugs were actually mixed, people were overdosing, you know, going through, getting a quick test on here was able to help identify it and then also save a lot of lives. We use them, we're going to be using this lab more for employment issues, and then we also use it for our probation. Any individuals that are on probation come over on a weekly or whatever schedule they're on in order to get tested, and they work closely with the courts and the probation department. So with this, again, putting the levy on there, it's going to help our coroner, and it's going to help our crime lab, which is going to end up helping our law enforcement officers. So a couple of different options on there. Once the auditor comes back, it's basically 2 million to 2.4, I believe, with the different levies. But again, something that is definitely needed for a county of our size to have a certified lab.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator.
Okay.
Any questions?
So we're asking the auditor to basically come up with what the numbers are going to be.
Yep.
Then they're going to come back to us for a vote.
Yep.
Okay. Some of the, the only concern I have on this is who's going to take ownership of promoting this? Is it going to be the coroner? Is it going to be the crime lab, or is it going to be the Commissioners?
Well, actually, I would say it should be everybody. Court should be involved, the sheriff should be involved, we should be involved because this is coming from our general fund. This isn't anything that's, my opinion, this is a win for Lorain County as we can go through and get a certified lab. It helps all law enforcement in Lorain County, helps, like I said, the FBI that uses it, and it helps the court systems, so.
So what's going to happen next, then? Someone's going to have to come to us and say, we need some money to, for campaigning, I take it?
Well, it
Is that what's going to happen next?
Well, we, the, as elected officials, you know, as my time as Commissioner, I would go out and I would actually do the campaigning. I spoke with the director, Elizabeth, very bright young lady, she's excited about this as well. She sees where the future, the future of this department and where we need to go. She's willing to volunteer her time to get out there and promote it. She is going to be, in my opinion, probably our best asset to explain this to the general public on what they do there. It's not very sexy, but when you go down and you see the equipment and the technology and everything that they do, and more importantly, the, we put the humane value on it, you know, we're helping individuals who have a drug addiction by going through and getting tested. It's not just to keep them, you know, to keep the community safe, it's also there to help these people who are facing the addiction fight it. They know that they have to come in and they have to be tested, and by doing that, they're working with them in order to keep these people clean, which is a benefit to all of Lorain County, and as we know, this is a huge problem, not just in Lorain County, but throughout the country.
Okay, but you're going to be coming back to us and requesting us to vote on this levy to put on a ballot, correct?
Correct.
At that point, if you don't mind, if you could put together the team and have a plan and a budget, because I, if I'm going to vote on a levy, I'd like to know how it's going to be marketed, how it's, who's going to be owner, who's going to take ownership of it, and who's going to get the message out. I think at the same time, we're going to be voting on a levy, I'd like to know who's going to have ownership of it.
Yeah.
If that's okay, I'm just asking you to, you know.
Yeah, just committees or things of that sort. Budget may be a little tough until we actually have it on there, before we can actually get commitments from private donors who would want to go through and contribute on this. I don't believe that this is anything that we can use government funds in order to do a private, or to do advertising for this campaign.
Okay.
But we should be able to get the majority of what you're asking for.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to nominate Dave to chair the committee.
Oh.
Do I have a second?
No, I have.
Anyhow.
I second that, oh wait, I don't get a vote.
Well, it's always a challenge in government, anytime there's an initiative with the levy, you know, trying to figure out how to orchestrate everything, and it's, you know, it's, it's challenging. I won't say terribly complicated, but it definitely is challenging. But the important thing out of the gate is that, you know, we need to come up with, with a recommendation or a plan that the entire board supports, because it's, it's not helpful when you have a split board out there with an initiative that sends a wrong message to the community. So I know we've had those situations in the past, so it's important to really have a, something that the whole board is going to support. You know, I don't think any, I don't think any campaign is perfect by any means, but issues, campaigns are always a lot more challenging. Folks may not realize that in the revised code, there's actually some boards in this state that are allowed to use their own funds, and, but in our case, no. You know, in a lot of cases, even when we're in this boardroom, we can talk about people, you know, gathering, gathering information and everything, you always have to be real careful about the messaging, so. But, you know, I'm certainly interested in seeing it. For those who work in law enforcement, they, they know all too well the value of an effective crime lab. You know, I believe without having an effective crime lab, you know, folks would almost be forced to, I can't remember if it's Independence where the, the state crime lab is, but it's quite a distance away where you'd have to take things to actually be looked at, and when there's undercover work that's being done, the undercover agents generally want stuff to be tested so they know what they're dealing with, and then they can go back later and make the arrest, and that's why they need the quick turnaround. It's also important to make sure that those who are going through the recovery process, you know, are, are properly screened and tested as part of their pathway back to recovery. So this is a very important initiative. I look forward to, to seeing what comes back and making it, you know, cost effective. But the first question always is, you know, the public really wants a lot of details on how it's going to be orchestrated, and so we just always need to make sure if we're going to make the ask, that we make the ask for what we actually need, so we don't have to come back later or have to end up subsidizing it in some way. But the designated revenue stream is really critical, and in light of the pandemic, the oversight has been about the severe impact that the epidemic is still having in the county, and the epidemic's not going to go away. And the sooner we can, you know, support law enforcement and get the dealers off the street, get the stuff tested, go back, make the arrests, get them off the streets, the better off we're going to be, and the sooner we can help our loved ones, you know, get away from, from their drugs and their abuse, and get back to recovery, get back to their families, get back to their jobs, the better off everybody's going to be. So this is a very important initiative, and, and I certainly look forward to working with my, my colleagues and those in law enforcement, you know, across the board to eventually, you know, get this passed based upon what we settle on.
Yeah, and, you know, with levies, we put terms on them, too. And so after so many years, they have to come back. Just one thing to note for the public, you're going to see a little bit of a higher ask because of the capital investments that got to go in. We, one of the criteria is being a certified lab, is we have to have a home for this department. And having them down in the basement and an old cafeteria, that's not the proper home, you know, just taking a look at it, you know, we look in downtown Illyria, we'd like to have them all in one location, so when people are going there for to see their probation officers and then being able to basically go down and get tested as well instead of going out through the parks and everything else, and making the area a little bit more safe for the residents of Illyria. This will, again, this is an important issue, I look forward to it, and I appreciate the board's time. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Administrator. May I also take? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yep.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Next item of business is number 12. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
Amend Section 6.7 Military Leave, AB 1 and 2, and D 1 and 2 in Lorain County Board of Commissioners' Personal Policy Manual.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
The next item of business is number 13. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
Approve payment in the amount of $51,936 as collected by Lorain County from January 1st through the December 31st, 2020, from Victim of Domestic Violence Fund to Lorain County Safe Harbor, Inc., DBA Genesis House, in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 2303.201 and 3113.34 through 39, funds for victims.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board?
If I could, Madam President, I just want to point out, you know, this is one important, I guess, distribution that's made every single year. Sadly, there's far too many victims of domestic violence. Too often, it ends up with severe injuries, sometimes death, really, really a sad situation. But under the Ohio Revised Code, you know, our requirement is that monies that come from marriage licenses and also, I guess, divorce decrees end up going to help with domestic violence in the, in the community. My understanding is, just looking in the sum of the records, we had over 1,300 marriage licenses. The amount that goes to the, to the Genesis House here today would be about just over 23,000 from the portion of those license, marriage license fees, and then divorce decrees, about over 800, almost 900 of those, and that was around 28,000. So coming up to a total amount of just over 51,000. But this is something that is in the Ohio Revised Code, and it's, it's a good way to get money back into the community to help individuals, especially those who are victims of domestic violence.
One sec, Commissioner Moore? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yep.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
The next item of business is number 14. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
Adjust the salaries of Avon Lake and Lorain Municipal Court employees representing the county's Chief Fifth Chair, Avon Lake, effective retroactive to July 1st, 2020, for Carathan Navanti, clerk of courts, new bi-weekly rate is $795.30. Tim Garu, bailiff, new bi-weekly rate is $516.10. Lorain, effective retroactive, June 1st, 2020. Jenso Soto, bailiff, new weekly rate is $875.90. And Bianca Valar, bailiff, new weekly rate is $892.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yep.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Moving on to Job and Family Services, the next item of business is number 15. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
Authorize purchase service agreement with Elcentra Disservices Socialist, Inc., Lorain, in the amount of $62,821.59 for summer camp for low-income Lorain County children using Tanna Funds effective June 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2021.
Move to approve.[1741.83] Move to approve?
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Lundey. Any discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
The next item of business is number 16. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
Authorize purchase service agreement with Lighthouse, Little Lighthouse Learning Center, Lorraine in the amount of $26,843.25 for summer camp for low-income Lorraine County children using TANF funds effective June 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2021.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yep.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Next item of business is number 17. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
Authorize purchase service with Horizon Education, Education Centers, North Homestead, Ohio in the amount of 125,000 for summer camp for low-income Lorraine County children using TANF funds effective June 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2021.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Lundey. Any discussion from the board?
I would just say, Madam President, certainly good to see these summer camps opening up. Cause I know last summer it was just so, so painful, you know, in the midst of the, the pandemic and knowing that, you know, people wanna give back to some degree of normalcy and especially with the kids, these summer camps have a, have a big impact on the kids in the community. So it's just, it's a good day to see these things coming back.
Yes. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Next item of business is number 18. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
Authorize purchase service agreement with Boys and Girls Club in Northeast Ohio, Lorraine in the amount of $517,100 for summer camp for low-income Lorraine County children using TANF funds effective June 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2021.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Next item of business is number 19. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
Authorize purchase service agreement with Tower Educational Consulting Group, Inc., Lorraine in the amount of $52,500 for summer camp for low-income Chi- Lorraine County children using TANF funds effective June 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2021.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Okay, we are moving on to the coroner. The next item of business is number 20. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
Approve the supplemental compensation for Lorraine County Forensic Pathologist Coroner in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 325.15D.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board? Okay, just so everybody understands, this was approved in the 2020 budget. And, um, his, his total compensation was approved. We're just writing the resolution for, um, the supplemental that was included in the budget.
And I, and I think, Madam President, that the, um, this is a result of some amendments that were made, Senate Bill 296, I think, in 2018 that actually came to fruition. But, um, because of the, the coroner's expertise, uh, that's where the additional supplement, uh, kicks in.
Effective 2019.
Right.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to veterans. The next item of business is number 21. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
Recent Resolution 2813, adopted December 9th, 2020, increasing the rate of pay for Veterans Service Commission members. There were no findings by the board establishing that a 50% increase for commission members constituted fair compensation as required by the Ho- Ohio Revised Code, Section 5901.04.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Any discussion from the board?
If I could, Madam President?
Sure.
Okay. Obviously, I'm, uh, very disturbed by this, uh, action here this morning. You know, when it, when it comes to our veterans, uh, the focus should be respect, uh, not revenge, and that's the way I see this today. Uh, this to me looks like a political hit job. I mean, let's just call it what it is, a political hit job on our veterans. You know, when a veteran serves on the Veterans Services Commission, they are there to advocate for veterans. Their duty is to be a voice for veterans and to make sure our veterans are getting the help and support that they've earned by serving our country. Today, they should be praised, praised for the job that they do, but instead, they're being punished simply for doing their job. Now, as county commissioners, you know, we have a job to do too. We're here to be the voice of the people, to do the work of the people. You'll have a tough time finding one Lorraine County resident who would say that it's a, a good idea to punish someone who fights for our veterans. The voters who put their trust in us want us to work with our veterans and their advocates not to punish them. They don't want this board to, to punish the President of the Veterans Services Commission, Steve Bancek. President Bancek, an Air Force veteran, a Lorraine Veteran of the Year, a lifelong resident of Lorraine County. Our county doesn't want this board to punish Samuel Wolf, also an Air Force veteran. Vice President Wolf is past commander, American Legion Post 12, American Legion County Commander, and more than a 30-year resident of Lorraine County. I don't believe our community wants this board to punish Sarah Markle of the U.S. Air Force Air National Guard. Master Sergeant Markle has earned the Air Force Commendation Medal, the Air Force Achievement Medal, and is a lifelong resident of Lorraine County. Our county doesn't want this board to punish Jose Torres, who represents the Military Order of the Purple Hearts on the Veterans Services Commission. Mr. Torres served in the Marine Corps as a machine gunner and is a lifelong resident of Lorraine County. And I don't believe our community wants this board to punish Joe Gee, who is a high, in, in high school, he enlisted in the Marines to serve in Vietnam. And Joe is now a head mentor coordinator for the Lorraine County Veterans Treatment Court, doing amazing work there. He's also Chair of the UAW CAP Veterans Committee. Today, we should be saying thank you to all of you for your service to our country and now to our county. You deserve praise, not punishment. This board member and this community is behind you. Please, keep advocating for our veterans, keep being their voice, and keep doing the job that you do so well. You know, I urge my colleagues to not take this action today. Instead, you know, let's get back to the table, let's take some time to talk, and let's get back to all of us working together and working with our veterans. Our veterans deserve dignity and respect today and every day.
The veterans had a three-year average budget allocation of 2.5 million. Last year, the actual spend was 2.2 million. The 300,000 remainder by Ohio Revised Code was to be returned to the general fund, and it was done under the tenure of the previous Board of Commissioners. In the 2021 budget meetings, the Veterans Executive Director requested 2.8 million dollars. We built back in the 300,000 they returned and met their full budget request. I also found in speaking with my budget director, $228,000 of CARES Act money that was pulled back from the previous administrator, and this board passed a resolution to get those checks cut, which has been done. This board also responded to a need to help homeless veterans via the Valor House. We passed a resolution for a less-than-matching, uh, federal dollars grant in the amount of $250,000. In the first 90 days, this board has gone over and above to help our local veterans financially, and we want them to succeed. The current veterans commissioners and their executive director should be holding meetings and planning their strategy for 2021 to help our 25,000 veterans here in Lorraine County. Instead, these six people are making it harder for veterans to get the help they need. Just last week, I had a veteran come to my office and asked to speak to any commissioner to ask why the doors are locked at our veterans office on Abbey Road. We've received several calls that the veterans offices, that, that calls to the veterans office are not returned. Veterans are clearly struggling to get the help they deserve from these six people. I don't think a 50% pay raise is fair compensation by the taxpayers that I represent. Especially when it appears that the veterans are getting a lot of talk, but no action for the past three months out of their veterans commissioners and executive director. I have confidence that the veterans commissioners can do their jobs. However, they need to conduct a thorough investigation here and ensure that they are acting in the best interests of Lorraine County's veterans, not for the self-serving acts of their executive director.
Um, this, this, uh, issue has been diluted through, uh, certain newspapers that I have given lots of data and quotes to, but seem to probably not wanna put down what I have said. The county administrator and I were actually on a speakerphone on Friday explaining the situation to the Chronicle, was not quoted. The Journal printed the seven-page dossier that was given to them without calling any of us. The Chronicle printed it without our quotes. The, uh, thanks to the administrator who called out and educated the Journal, on Saturday, the article was actually written with all the facts and the stats. Sunday, an editorial was written, which looked more like a Facebook rant, which, like I said about six weeks ago, seems to be the wave of the media today anyway. Hence why I'm working on another avenue to get the message out. What I, what I saw happening here is, again, in December, in, in between, um, the election and the new administration, an organization out of the 42 boards that we have, this board actually gets compensation. The other 42 boards in this county do not receive compensation to sit on a board. My uncle, who's a Vietnam vet, is on one of these boards up in Michigan, northern Michigan. And feel, and even, they get compensated. By statute, you are allowed to get reimbursed for your expenses. But up there, they don't have the budget that we do down here. Uh, he felt that, why would I take money away from veterans that need it? My other family members that work in DFAS find it very hard because veterans really don't wanna, they, they don't wanna ask for help because they know other veterans need help more than they do. That's how most veterans are. They know that there's always someone else in better need than they are. What I found disturbing in December, and we keep finding more and more things, is that they call it a veterans fund. It was a slush fund. If you wanna take a look and reread some of these articles that put the word slush fund, you'll see why we rescinded that $300,000. They do receive their money through the budgetary process. We called several other counties, and again, as we said in the previous meeting, we didn't really wanna repeat some of the verbiage that was used. Um, this looks more like a self-serving board. The fact that they went from 800 to 1,200, you may think, wow, 50% raise. It changes a few things. You now receive PRS. You get a lot more benefits for yourself. Not for the veterans, for yourself. So I'm talking about the board and the executive director. And to keep saying veterans is diluting the message. The message is this. We're rescinding the raise, self-serving raise that we feel, and I can tell you right now, I feel was politically motivated and had nothing to do with veterans, but everything to do with self and political, uh, avenues. Because if you take a look at what really happened here, folks, when the media starts getting letters, seven-page dossiers of half-truths before we do, and I'm getting phone calls from the media asking me about a report that I received, I'm like, I never received that. Tells me it's a political hit job. And why are they mad? Because we exposed a slush fund and we stopped it. And when I start talking to people in the public going, what are you doing to the veterans? I said, we're not doing anything to the veterans. We're exposing a board. You know a board gets $800 a month? Wow. He goes, well, they get 1,200 now. What? I goes, yeah, we, we have a hard time, but you know what? We do have a lot of hard-working board members cause people join these boards for the love of the service that they do. Not self-service, public service. And that's why, well, we, we actually had to take the prosecutor's office out of this discussion because he represents both parties, the commissioners and the veterans board. So we made sure that we had our ducks in a row, or this would have been done last week. So right now, out of the management team that this new commissioner board has brought on, 40% of our management team we've brought on board are veterans and serving members. A Democrat, a Republican, Libertarians, we don't care. You know, these are serving veterans. Don't care about your political affiliation. But if you're gonna start striking us and start playing games like this, and then you wanna come back and say, hey, can you help us as a board? Maybe it's time that the board reevaluate, cause honestly, I would love to take this board to $0 and just do what they do with my uncles up there who's a Vietnam vet and get reimbursement of expenses that they incur. Because the boards that I know, they do a great job, and I'm sure this board, these members do a great job too. But to sit there in December after getting a $300,000, create a veterans fund, which is really a slush fund, and then turn around and get $1,200 raise, sounds like political payback to me for the last election. That's what it sounds like. Is it? No, I doubt it. I don't think I could prove it. It looks like it. And the fact that a seven-page dossier went to the media before we even seen it? Come on. Talk about political games. Last night on Facebook, on their own page, it said, political, political payback's coming today. It's, the fact they use the word political payback proves my point, that they're a political machine. Not a public service machine helping our veterans. They're a political machine. And I'm tired of seeing it. I'm seeing this more and more, and we're exposing it. We're not afraid to expose it. If you notice that, in the last 90 days, we have not been afraid to expose this type of stuff. And we're gonna continue, cause there's a lot more. But again, this stuff will be coming out slowly as we find them. You can call this what it is. But honestly, the reason why there's a lot of anger is cause we are taking them away from their 1,200, which gets them over the PRS level so they can get their benefits. And out of the 42 boards that we oversee, it's the only one that receives compensation. Is it justified? We could say yes. But I think $800 a month is a pretty fair compensation to be on a board. That's the end of my discussion.
If I could, Madam President?
Yes, Commissioner Lundey.
Thank you. You know, this, the compensation increase was approved by the previous board. I was a member of that board. So if, if you're upset with the level of compensation, which this board certainly has the authority to, um, either grant that or, I guess, is what you're proposing today, reducing that. You know, attack me. Attack me, but don't attack the members of the board. And demonize them. And I, you know, and I certainly don't appreciate any reference to a slush fund. Um, I don't think there's a person, if we went outside this building right now and said spending money on veterans, would you consider that to be a slush fund? There's not a person out there who would consider it to be a slush fund. It's not a slush fund. Um, these dollars are well-invested in helping our, helping our veterans. It is, anybody who talks to veterans who try to make the transition back home or are still haunted at night by, you know, post-traumatic stress disorder, the scars of war, you know, this is serious stuff, folks. These are folks who served our country and are still dealing with, you know, lingering issues and, you know, we need to treat them with dignity and respect. But if you're gonna attack anyone today, please attack me. Uh, don't attack the board or the members of the board. As far as this increase in compensation, the members of this board are able to get compensation uh, because the legislature makes it possible. So while, as I said, you can attack me for the decision that was made last year, attack the legislature. They're the ones who made it possible for a board like this to receive compensation. You know, the, the board didn't just self-impose that. At the same time, they haven't received any increase in compensation for more than eight years, more than eight years. So I think, um, that folks have, have waited, uh, certainly waited long enough to receive the compensation. And, uh, I just, as I said, we should be praising them today, not penalizing them. And this is, it's, it's clearly a political hit job. This is payback. It shouldn't be this way. We don't need this in our county. We need to be working together, work through a pandemic, doing all we can in every way possible to support our veterans. But please, if you wanna attack anybody today, please attack me. Uh, don't attack the board members and attack the veterans.
Well, I would think, yeah, that's assumed already, I guess, but you know how we do when we assume. The fact of the matter is, this was created in December with a lame duck, uh, lame duck, uh, board. When you start sending seven-page dossiers with half-truths, this is, this is what's gonna happen. It's gonna get ugly. Instead of coming in and sitting down and speaking, they've decided to, this board, this board and the executive director decided to attack us. So that's, that is fine and dandy. And again, I got 42 other boards where we're trying to find volunteers, and we do. We have a lot of volunteers that wanna help out this community. To insinuate that veterans are suffering from this and tying this slush fund to that is insane. The fact of the matter is, 2.8 million is, was budgeted. If they come back to us in September and say, we would like another million dollars, they would get that, and not because of our three generositys, but because the statute requires it. So the board should be looking at ways to get that money to the veterans that need it. Not picking fights, not setting it, not picking fights, not sending seven-page dossiers with half-truths, and go to the media instead of sitting down with us. I have, I'm, I think this is getting way blown out of hand. I believe it was done so intentionally. I believe it was done so for self-promotion and for financial gain. So guess what? I mean, you're still receiving $800 a month to sit on a board. That's pretty good. I think the other 42 boards in this county right now would like that, too. Now, does the statute allows that? No. Statute does allow us to compensate this board, and we are. So the veterans are receiving the money they deserve and above and beyond that. This board that we're talking about, we rescinded the ability for them to spend an extra $300,000 that they got, or tried to get, and spend as they saw fit without any oversight from this board. If they have an issue with that, they should take it up with their state reps and change the ORC to make it fit their needs. Thank you.
Okay, just for, so the public understands, on December 9th, the previous Board of Commissioners passed a resolution, and that resolution was for the creation of a special revenue fund. There is misinformation out there from the media that it's called a Veteran Service Fund. It is called a special revenue fund. So the public understands what a special revenue fund is. If the veterans have an additional $300,000 left of their budget allocation at the end of the year, that money would go into the special revenue fund. However, the previous administrator, budget director, auditor, they did not set up the fund for that additional $300,000 to go into. So per Ohio Revised Code, that $300,000 had to come back to the general fund, which it did. Because they didn't set up the fund, we then had to make the decision if we wanted to go through the accounting measure and set up the fund. And upon investigation, we found it to be an uncommon practice in the state of Ohio. We not only spoke with other counties, county commissioners, budget directors, we spoke with state reps, we spoke with state senators, we spoke with attorneys, and they all told us that this was an uncommon practice in the state of Ohio. So it was the correct thing to do to rescind the slush fund, which is what it is. Because if they could put $300,000 into it this year, let's say they decide not to spend $500,000 on our 25,000 veterans in Lorain County, then they could squirrel away another half a million dollars with money that is, does not have oversight from this Board of Commissioners. So we rightfully so rescinded that, so it comes back into the general fund as per Ohio Revised Code. We then built that $300,000 back into their budget. And what we are saying is, go out in the community and do your jobs, Veterans Commissioners and Executive Director. Stop the political posturing and go out there and do your jobs. To get phone calls, to get people walking into our office looking for a commissioner saying the doors are locked, you need to be out there doing your jobs and helping our veterans.
Can I move to close discussion?
Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the move to close discussion.
Commissioner Hung.
Yes.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Lundey.
No.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the resolution.
Commissioner Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
Commissioner Lundey?
No.
Okay, moving on to number 22. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution into the record.
Increase the rate of pay for Veteran Service Commission members to $824 per month from $800 per month in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5901.04. 3% increase in compensation from that is in effect as of April 14, 2021. Constitute fair compensation for Veteran Service Commission members, Commission members under Ohio Revised Code, Section 5901.04.
I move to postpone it definitely.
Second, motion was made by Moore, seconded by Hung. Any discussion from the board? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Lundey?
President.
Moving on to reports, County Administrator Mr. Tom Williams.
If I may, Madam President, I'd like to correct something that was in the articles from the veterans stated about me. I just want to go through something real quick. I was actually in the Air Force, and I blew out my knee in basic training. And because of that, I got a medical discharge. Actually, I had over 120 days in, so I could be considered a veteran. However, I don't consider myself a veteran. One, didn't make it through it. And two, having family that had served in the military, seen what they went through, I thought it would be a dishonor to them, especially my father. My father served in the United States Marine Corps when he went into Korea. He enlisted when he was 17 years old. He then switched over and became, joined the Army. Served two tours in Vietnam, and with this, you know, he was brought up, you know, you go through and you do things at face value. You honor the individuals, you honor what they've done in the past, but more importantly, you honor what they're doing today. And with that, you know, I don't want to get into the Veterans Commissioners and that because I really haven't had too much to deal with them. But the executive director, when he called me, he made a statement to me, and probably should have said something out before, but I didn't because I just thought, okay, he's just rambling on. In his call, he told me, look, if you guys go through and you play ball with us, we can make life easier for you. It can be a win-win situation. He then went on to tell me that, you know, there's a lot of anger towards the commissioners and that he could help fix this. This was back in January. What really disturbed me is when he brought up my position, my title, and being the administrator, how he could help my mother gain benefits by working with him and getting benefits for my father. Now, as I said, my father was a bright individual, and before he passed, he went through and he took care of my mother. As I told the individual in the call, I said, look, my sister is the executive for my parents' will, and she's the one that's also taking care of my mother. I think there's a lot of misinformation on there in that paper. He stated that I didn't call him back for two weeks. We had a meeting. He canceled. I did follow up to find out if he wanted to reschedule. It wasn't because I was waiting two weeks for him. He was the one that canceled. And now, he doesn't want to talk via phone. He wants everything in emails. He's making it very difficult to have that type of relationship there. Again, this is just my, my view on it and everything. And I am proud that when we came through as the administrator on board, that you went through and you hired so many veterans. As Commissioner Moore stated, didn't matter what party they belonged to, we went through and we got people based on qualifications. We have a West Point grad. We have an individual in the Air Force, retired Air Force, Army, all different branches, and they're doing an amazing job, to a point where this week even, our, all our directors are doing great jobs. And why I want to talk about what we did this week, healthcare benefits, finding issues where we're going to potentially save 400 to 800,000 on issues that weren't addressed previously. And I can't go into the details because we know about pending litigation from this, so I won't go into this, but it's going to be helpful for our case. But these are the directors that are going through and diving into the documents, reading the documents, and finding out how we can go through, not only improve as far as saving money for the taxpayers, but saving money for our employees, improving the benefits for the employees, and more importantly, making sure that we're spending the money wisely. So I would like to give a thank you to our new broker. I'd like to give a thank you to our healthcare provider, and I want to thank our HR director and our other, our deputy director for helping and going through, doing the investigation where we're going to see a huge cost savings in our healthcare. We continue to do this, not just through healthcare, but we're looking at it for our payroll, working with the auditor to come up with ways that's going to make our system more efficient, provide better services to our employees, and more importantly, saving money in the long run. These are just some of the projects that are going on with our HR department. And again, they're doing a great job up there. We still have rooms for improvement, and we have things that we have to improve, mistakes have been made, but we are making changes on a daily, weekly basis to fix things. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Administrator Williams. Mr. County, Mr. Assistant Prosecutor, Mr. Petticord?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a brief report. There's one piece of current litigation that I would like to discuss in executive session with the board, so when we move on to executive session, I ask it to be for the purpose of discussing current litigation.
It's current litigation. I have the word pending, so you want current. Can I use pending?
We could talk about pending litigation as well, but there is one piece of current litigation I want to talk about.
I will add the word current, so we have it. Okay, moving on to Commissioner's report. Commissioner Lundey, you are first up.
Okay, thank you very much, Madam Chair. It's been a busy, busy week. First, we had a Zoom meeting. I know that, you know, we all are in different areas of the county, working on different things, and had the opportunity to represent the board in a Zoom discussion with our Lieutenant Governor John Houstead and members of JOBS Ohio, having a discussion about Ford Motor Company and their recent announcement at the Ohio Assembly Plant. We were informed the state has had phone calls with the new CEO at Ford, and they think that Ohio is still in a very positive position for the emergence of battery-powered vehicles in the future, so they're going to continue to stay in close contact with Ford. There's, doesn't seem to be any reason for any major concern about a loss of what is over there at the Ohio Assembly Plant. In fact, that product that's in there, the heavy-duty trucks, is selling extremely well, and according to Ford Motor Company, is a very profitable product line. So those are always good things to hear. But definitely appreciate the Lieutenant Governor making the time available for that meeting on Friday afternoon. I think we met somewhere around 4:15 or something, so he definitely worked us in before the end of the week. Also had the opportunity to be on a Zoom meeting with Senator Sherrod Brown, and that was a meeting that was arranged through the Ohio, his mask is really tickling my nose this morning, maybe I'm coming into money. But anyhow, with Senator Sherrod Brown discussing the Recovery Act and the Rescue Act and what that might mean for county governments, very well-tended by county commissioners throughout the state of Ohio, found it to be very informative. Probably the most important thing for us to know about is that they're projecting that the guidelines that we will receive as to how we can operate with the money is by May 10th. So we're hoping to have the guidelines by May 10th, and that'll be extremely helpful. Obviously, the first phase of the money coming in is for government operations. The second phase of the money that will come in is something that can be utilized for facilities. So, but May 10th, this is what everybody's waiting for, is for these guidelines to come in. Update on the Community Protection Committee, 113,000 vaccinations in Lorain County. Lorain County Public Health itself has administered over 60,000 shots in the arms. Obviously, there's been concerns as of late with the J&amp;J vaccination. Important to point out that apparently six people have experienced some blood clot issues out of 6.8 million people vaccinated, but still, that's been put on pause here in the state of Ohio, obviously here in Lorain County and across the country. Everybody predicts it's probably going to be a short pause, but they want to take another look at it and make sure that it's not a major issue. But unfortunately, six people have been impacted with some blood clot issues out of 6.8 million who received the vaccination. It's important to point out that the hospitals in our county are saying that the COVID cases and the COVID patients that they're seeing are those now that are 50 years old and 40 years old. So, you know, the virus is still active out there. Everybody needs to continue to keep their guard up and play it safe. The sad part is, is during this whole pandemic, as we pointed out, the epidemic is still out there. Obviously, the pandemic's having a big impact on those battling addiction and mental health issues, and there's no question that overdoses continue to spike. And finally, I want to thank my colleagues. I was there to represent you and represent this board on Saturday at Sacred Heart Church, where they announced plans for the Ohio Hispanic Veterans Memorial to come to Lorain. A lot of great community leaders who are working on that initiative, and it's going to be a very exciting project for Lorain County to be home to the Ohio Hispanic Veterans Memorial. The special guest who came in to speak was Brigadier General Rivera Smith, and she is a hometown hero. Graduated from Admiral King, grew up in Lorain, and it was just really, really great to have somebody come back home and talk about, well, when I used to go here to Sacred Heart and go to the dances, and there was a, you know, the disco ball in the middle of the room, and telling the old stories from high school and the community. And now, an individual who started as a truck driver in the Army is now a brigadier general, mother of eight, I think grandmother of half a dozen children and grandchildren, but just really a true role model for young adults and for young women to look and realize that, yes, I too can be a brigadier general someday, and we're so proud to call her one of our own. And that completes my report.
Good morning. I had the opportunity to attend the Blue and Gold Award presentation for Cub Scout PAC-153 on Sunday evening. I was joined by Senator Nathan Manning and North Ridgeville Fire Chief, representing Mayor Kevin Corcoran, who had another engagement that evening. I attended and presented certificates on behalf of the board and my colleagues as the young men and women bridged over in their Arrow of Light achievement. Congratulations to them. Yesterday, for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, I accompanied our 911 director, Harry Williamson, for a few hours, visiting the police stations in the county that have dispatchers and thanking them for all they do to keep our residents safe. And we brought them donuts, with the clarification that they did not have to share them with any other members of the staff in said police department. We shared, we started the day down in Wellington and then stopped in Oberlin, Amherst, then to Lorain, then to North Ridgeville, onto Avon, Avon Lake, Sheffield Village, Sheffield Lake, and our last stop was at Ilaria PD. I would just like to, like to thank all the departments that we stopped at yesterday for being so gracious and welcoming us as we just popped in without an appointment scheduled. So really wonderful people, and they are working hard to get the folks that they help, that need the help when they are calling. So thank you to them. And then just a quick reminder, tomorrow evening, the Township Association meeting will take place at the Lodge in New Russia Township at 7:00 PM. That concludes my report.
Commissioner Moore?
Thank you. I met with Attorney General Yost on last Thursday, had a very good discussion in regards to, which is, I'm glad we have a date now on the Recovery Act money, on May 10th. He should have a decision in the next probably seven to 10 days. He has filed suit against the federal government in regards to, some of the language in that bill says, kind of advises local governments what they can and cannot do. I believe he will win that lawsuit, and when that happens, we'll probably have some more discussions on whether or not the federal government has the ability to tell a local government they can reduce their taxes or increase their taxes with this money that's coming out. It'll be interesting to see, probably by May 10th, we'll have some very fun discussions like today in regards to how to spend the money. So I'm looking forward to that. The Golden Acres issues that's been sitting around, I've been... The Golden Acres issue that's been sitting around, I've, I've been meeting with several people, and it's just not moving. The building is costing way too much to repair. We need to tear it down. I'm not asking this board to vote. We're probably going to have to vote and make a decision. But what I'm asking for is maybe to have the county administrator who snuck out. But basically, he may be watching. So, if we could get our facilities manager to start getting quotes so that we can have an educated discussion on what to do with Golden Acres property. I believe that if we could tear it down, we could sell it. Yeah, I had one person actually say, you know, give me the property and I'll tear it down, and I don't think we can do that. And the last thing we want to do is sell this property, have that building get in worse shape than it already is. So far, I've been quoted four to five million just to get it back up. And if you've walked through it, you understand why we can't sell it. They built that thing to last a thousand years, and there isn't too much you can do with that facility. It's on a ravine, so there's riparian rights with the river in order to develop that property. So, you have to be off like seventy-five feet. So, it hinders a lot of other type of development. So, what I'm asking is maybe to have our facilities manager go out and get some quotes so we can at least have a, maybe a discussion moving forward in regards to Golden Acres. Other things I've been working on, or we've been working on, because, you know, sometimes I'll ask, we'll ask for help with the three members up here, is on the, on the Convention Center and Tourism Board that we have. The board hasn't met. We need some new members. I'm asking the public if you wish to participate in our, in our, our Tourism Board. It's non-paying, but it's going to be some exciting things coming on. We're talking a lot about a Convention Bureau and a Convention Center maybe coming to our county, a private-public avenue, which is something we've been working on. Eighteen years ago when I was here, I tried to do it. So, we'll see how it goes this time. The goal of this Convention Center is to make itself sufficient, and that's where we're at right now. So, financially, I believe we can pull off bringing in a Convention Center here and not using any general funds. Maybe to start it off, we may have to loan some money to the, to this area. There's also another board, I believe Commissioner Lundey may have been here when, a couple of years ago, due to reasons with the state of Ohio, they formed a Convention Bureau Facilities Board. We will need members for that, too, and we'll, you know, if you want to reach out to me, I can be point on behalf of the other two, if you want, or the other, you can reach out to your favorite commissioner, which we'll have that debate for, for years. The way it works is six commissioners, there's six appointments by the commissioners. It's fifty-fifty Republican and Democrat. The largest city gets to pick three. That's a two, two to one, so basically two Democrats and one Republican, or it could be two Republicans and one Democrat. Then there's two more that are appointed by the agreement of all other mayors, and they have to be fifty-fifty R and Ds. And then you also have to have some major business trade associations that are going to have to sit on this board. The facilities boards will basically be managing a Convention Center. This is something that we've been working on as a team up here. I believe we're getting close to, maybe we'll start having some more public discussions. But what I'd like to do is get more people involved in the community to, to kind of step up and help us out and, and get on some of these boards. So, I do appreciate the help that all three of your teams have helped with me in this. Again, it was something I, eighteen years ago, I tried. I believe Commissioner Lundey, you actually tried to at one point, and I think right now, I think is the perfect time to come up with something that we can really benefit our community economically. These, there's some other, I think I believe the other, your teams have been helping me also. We've been working together with the Military Training Center for public use. The individual came to us, and basically what happened was he, he did, he knew he had the funding, but it wasn't in writing. This individual's been out, and he's been getting financial support from national organizations. They're looking at maybe putting a facility somewhere in the city of Lorraine. It's going to be a very positive impact for the city and for the county overall. It's basically, if you want to learn how to be a Navy SEAL for a week, you can actually get training, Conference Center. It sounds like a very exciting project that, that is coming along rapidly. It should be presented to us pretty soon. And then I've met with, I've been meeting on Zoom meetings, and tomorrow I'll be, I'll be meeting with the budget team in regards to the Nord Center Crisis Stabilization Project. There's a, maybe some of you have seen these magazines out. They're called Healing and Hope. It's basically dealing with, there, we really have no infrastructure to get through the issues that are, that people are trying to, you know, we're trying to get under control. They talk about the obit crisis, mental illness crisis, drug aware. I mean, this, this is something that a lot of organizations are working on right now. I'm hoping by tomorrow, I will, I will step up and advise them. I've talked to our Assistant County Administrator, Rob Weber. He'll be assisting me. And basically, like any great idea, sometimes you need to kind of have a point and have, and so you can facilitate maybe the meetings and bring everybody together. I've been talking to other groups that I know that they don't, they've never met, that are willing to invest a lot of money in a project like this. So, this is a, I, I know maybe some of you have actually read about this, but I believe this is something that we can get behind without using general fund money and actually help facilitate and help build this center that, that's been going on for some years now. So, basically, that is the end of my report, and I thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Okay, our next item is E, the Clerk's Report. Madam Clerk, do you have a report today?
I do not.
Okay, our next item is F, Board Correspondence. I move to waive the reading of the Board Correspondence due to a lengthy executive session we have scheduled.
Second?
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Lundey?
Hi.
At this time, I move to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel issues, employment and new hires, and current litigation.
I'll second, as long as it's not lengthy.
Okay, we'll try Commissioner Moore. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Hung?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Lundey?
Hi.
Because I know we only have three issues, so there's not that issue.
I move to approve the personnel summary sheet.
Second.
Motion was made by Hung, seconded by Moore. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hung.
Yes.
Mr. Moore.
Aye.
Mr. Lundee.
Aye.
Okay, meeting announcements. Please note we have an annexation meeting on Tuesday, April 20th at 9:30 a.m. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, at 9:30 a.m. Is there any further business? Since there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I forget to ask Dan about the [inaudible 00:00:19] about the [inaudible 00:00:20] about the